All ready? We'll call the public budget hearing on the March, yeah, March 8th, 2022 to order at 5:30. We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ware, if you take role.
Kira Thompson. Colleen Marcus.
Here.
Nancy Farrell.
Here.
Kathy Leveras.
Here.
Diana Coyne.
Here.
Bill Garvey.
Here.
Mayor Raichell.
Here, thank you. Now, we have the presentation of the fiscal '23 budget, and then we'll have public comment. And the public hearing will not be closed today, it will be closed at our next meeting in April. Superintendent, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Kim and Julia for all their hard work on this, as well as our budget sub, school committee members that are on that, so thank you. Certainly not an easy task each year, so. So, I thought we would start off talking a little bit about some of the 30,000-foot mark type of items. And then what will happen is Kim and Julia will also jump in to get into the more granular pieces of the budget. So, what's included in our budget this year? We are putting in for a, it's a 1 million ESER offset removal. So, as you remember, we took on that offset, I believe, a couple of years ago. And the hope is that we can take that offset, hopefully, and make it much more fiscally responsible by making sure that that's off. The other big piece of this, which is in every budget, is the contractual increases of staff and faculty. We're going to talk about special education increases that you see is highlighted at 10.81%. And we want to talk about that and some of the reasons behind that. We're going to talk about the COVID-19 impact, and hopefully, we're getting to the point where we can stop having that conversation about COVID-19 in the way that we do with schools, but we're still having them. And we're going to talk a little bit about the Ukrainian-Russia war impact on all of us, but in West Springfield and potential things we need to think about. And finally, the established 1 million returned to the town. If you remember, through, part of it was because of the ESER money. But also, a big part of that was the work that Kim and Julia did. If you remember, they went through 1,400 lines and removed, I don't want to say fluff, but they removed funds that had not been used in a few years, which equaled just under $1 million. And that was returned to the town. So, moving on from there, I bring this up, and you've seen this before, but just a reminder to also the people at home. We continue to be a big source for refugee resettlement in town. We're known for that, and not only in our area, but obviously across probably the country, although people are really surprised when they hear it, but we are fourth in the country per capita. And that was through the 2015 to 2019 data, so we'll see what happens from there. But this goes to the conversation around what's happening in Ukraine. Obviously, we have a large Ukrainian population here in town. And it's something that we just want to think about as the potential of refugee resettlements, when that happens, if it even happens. But as you have probably seen, there's a lot of destruction going on there. And so, because we have so many Ukrainian families here, we should try to project at least some, in some way, that we will see an increase in our enrollment, potentially. Okay? When that will happen, if it will happen, again, is all projection, but it is something that we need to be mindful of. As we talk about the impact on COVID-19, certainly, we're all aware of what has transpired. And we are probably aware of the ones that have been impacted the most, right? We all have been impacted, but those folks whose socioeconomic were in difficult shape prior, you know, obviously, struggling even more during this COVID time. And so, a big piece of what we've been working on that you have allowed us to do, and Kim's going to talk about this in a little bit, the ESER positions aren't on this operating budget. But the work that you have approved for us around interventions, both on the social-emotional side and the academic side, you're going to see even later tonight, some of the jumps that we're seeing academically. We're still dealing with some dysregulation of students and their behaviors. That's going to be, that's an impact that I think we're going to be working through for a couple of years. But they're coming around, and we're in a much better place than we were last year at this time, for sure. So, Kim?
Good evening, everyone. So, this slide is basically, has a link that's going to, can take you to the background. This is what's going to be available and is available actually currently right now on our WSPS website. It's or within this presentation, so I, oops, hang on, sorry about that. Too many things. I always have too many tabs open, if anyone knows me, I have usually at least a dozen. So, things, I just want to give you a preview of how to use this for anyone at home or here. So, there's some tabs here at the bottom. The first one is, the one that you see here is the actual budget summary. And it gives you, at a glance, the function code summary of increases and decreases that we're requesting from FY '22 to FY '23. This other tab actually will give you every single line item, 1,200 lines, if you're so inclined. It does have FTEs that are charged to a particular line, so if you want to see where staff is being charged and how that works out, that's available for you to review. And then this last page, which is what I think I just want to call attention to, which I don't know, you can see on your monitors, but I don't know if you can see it at home, but we're going to, this is a new tab for being transparent about any changes. For example, between the time that we published in the West Springfield Record and now, we've had two changes to sped costs for FY '23 that came to light. So, we're tracking the changes here, and there's also going to be additional changes as we proceed through the budget, that especially that we know of this year, and I'll get to those in a further slide. So, and if anyone, if the public city council, anyone has any questions on the details of the budget, please let me know, and you can reach out to our office, and we'll be happy to help. So, that's this one. All right, so, details of the major changes, so the contractual increases. This year, we have four contracts, teachers, Unit D, the paraprofessionals, Unit D, the nurses, and the clerical are all settling this year, are all under negotiations for next year. So, in the budget right now, the only thing is, you're only going to see the step-in level increases, so our budget is likely to increase because it doesn't reflect the negotiated wages in the current budget. So, along with the final town council approval, the timing of the final settlements will likely determine the actual starting budget that we have. So, if the contracts settle after May 1st, the town's going to reserve the wages within their budget negotiation, then they'll be transferred to the school department in FY '23. So, this is still kind of preliminary budget at the moment. So, it's important to kind of know that about this figure. So, special education changes, I don't know if you want to discuss those.
So, special education, as we all know, the ebbs and flows of special education and the costs of that. We are seeing increased costs across the state with special education. Indicators are really around social-emotional for what we're seeing. For example, we have, we're up 50% year in, year out on high school referrals, which is not normal. And so, a lot of those have to do with social-emotional and anxiety and depression. And so, we're seeing increase in referrals without a doubt. Obviously, we're being mindful that kids are coming off of, especially on the academic side, kids are coming off of a pandemic. And we're seeing that academic growth, as I mentioned before. So, less, a little bit less of a concern right now than the SEL in terms of making sure that our kids are healthy and safe, both physically and mentally. And so, we are seeing increases in that. We also had three students who, that moved in, that were placed outside at a cost of $478,000. So, there's those types of things that we take on that, like every district does, that we inherit, that doesn't always get, that's always expected in the budget. The, Julia's going to talk a little bit more about the circuit breaker reimbursement and what that means, and we were seeing an increase, but I think it dropped a little bit from where we first started. We removed from the sped 240 grant, the offset of $180,000. Again, another offset that we're trying to get rid of, so we're not carrying that on year in, year out. So, that's $180,000 of that. And then, part of this project also is the, or part of this budget is the proposal for transition program between CAS program at Cowing and moving to the new Coburn School, as well as moving a group back to the middle school. So, that together has obviously increased our special education percentage quite a bit this year.
Good evening, everybody. Since some of our school committee members are new, we thought it would be useful to talk a little bit about Circuit Breaker and give people a little bit of background, if it's something that they are not as familiar with, and for some of our families and people at home who maybe don't know much about Circuit Breaker. So, Circuit Breaker was established in 2004 by the state government as a way to provide additional state funding to districts for high-cost special education students. So, districts are reimbursed 75% of their cost above and beyond the foundation enrollment amount for that year, right? So, for FY '22, that foundation amount is $47,000 and some change. So, costs that we have above that, we file a claim, and then we'll be reimbursed 75% of those costs for our highest-cost special education students. The tricky part about Circuit Breaker is that it follows here in West Springfield, a three-year cycle. So, if you see on the slide, so in year one, we file a cycle in July, it's usually due the first week in July, that is a summary of all of our expenses in the prior fiscal year. Then, the following year, once that file is reviewed, approved by DESI, sometimes there's an audit, then they make quarterly payments based on that claim throughout the following fiscal year, so in year two. And then, we account for that in year three and use that as an offset to special education expenses in our budget. So, in the presentation, there's a link to additional resources, if you'd like to know some more about the Circuit Breaker program, about what's allowable, what's not allowable, how it is calculated. To give you a bit of an idea about this, so on the three columns on this slide, you see the claim amount, right? So, that is our total expenses for eligible special ed costs for eligible students within the year. You see, the next column is the reimbursement, and the reimbursement amount is always less because they, like, the tip, the idea is that goal is to reimburse 75%. That amount can be lower because it's subject to state appropriation. I believe in FY '18, the reimbursement amount was actually 72%, right? So, that amount can fluctuate, and we won't know that amount until the state budget settles. And then, so the reimbursement amount that we get paid in quarterly payments throughout that year, then we use in the following year's budget. So, if you look at our expenses in our Circuit Breaker claim for the past couple of years, we see that expenses dipped in FY '21, which we expected because there were fewer services being offered, and so we had fewer expenses in FY '21 due to COVID. But that also means that our reimbursement went down in FY '22, which is the amount that we're using in the FY '23 budget, right? So, there's a time lag between our claim, between the reimbursement, and then when it's put into our budget. So, as you can see, our FY '22 expenses have gone up for our current year. This is an estimate based on the students that we have, the services that we're providing, and the places that they are currently enrolled, right? As Tim mentioned, we're seeing an increase in student need, and we're providing those services, which means that in our current year, our expenses are going up. We will be reimbursed a higher amount for those next year, but that money won't be used until our FY '24 budget. So, we just wanted to give you guys a better understanding of how the Circuit Breaker program works and how it's used within the budget process and the budget cycle here in West Springfield.
And we also threw in a slide here on maintenance of effort. So, something else that's kind of important to know about special education costs. It's a bit of a heads-up, so there's a requirement at the federal level that barring some really hard-to-meet standards, a district must spend at minimum what was spent per pupil basis for special education in the year before. So, I'm mentioning that because many districts during COVID did not meet maintenance of effort because of COVID. So, the state hasn't released any information about what they're planning to do on that. We're hoping that we get some pass on that because of the situation across the state. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We'll keep you posted on what happens with that. The other big reason for the increase is the ESER offset. So, in order to meet the needs for last year, for this current year, for FY '22, we applied a $1 million offset from the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the elementary and secondary education emergency relief funding. We did also do that the year prior, as Tim had mentioned. So, we're requesting to remove that to bring the operating budget closer to fully supporting the recurring operational needs. What will continue to happen is that, assuming this is all set, is that the ESER grant, they will continue to support the recurring costs, staff that were prior charged, being charged to school choice. So, in addition, most of the Student Opportunity Act positions that were hired this year are being charged to the ESER funding. So, on the website, there's also the ability to download the current ESER III grant for the review, so you can see how those positions are being charged. We are going to come back to you in about a month or so to go over the ESER grant. There's an amendment for the Student Opportunity Act that's due within a month. So, we will take some time at some point to go over and at least send you something so that you have information about how ESER is being funded and how it's relating to the Student Opportunity Act priorities. So, we will be back. So, but at this point for this hearing, it's just to go over what we're asking for, for the operating budget. So, next slide, Chapter 70, where we're getting the funds. I think the key piece here, so you'll see that from last year to this year, there is, even though we lost 76 students, it was a 2% decrease, we see a $2.5 million increase in Chapter 78 to the town. So, most of that is actually due to the 4.5% increase due to inflation. So, that's the biggest reason why we still saw an increase. And then, the other piece that is important to note is that despite the decrease in enrollment, we, the Chapter 70 formula includes a higher rate for increment for districts that have a higher low-income percentage, and we fall in, out of 12 tiers, we are in the 10th tier for low-income numbers. Something else just to go over is per pupil, I know it's brought up a lot, per pupil expenditures. West Springfield definitely is one of the lower, we have a lower per pupil expenditure. That's something that's calculated after the fact. The last actual year that we have per pupil costs available to review is FY '20 because the current, so FY '21, which was last year, in order to determine per pupil cost, it's using the end-of-year report, which hasn't been fully audited yet. So, those numbers will not get released until the audit is complete for FY '20, so, for FY '21, sorry. And then, what's next? So, we have a lot that's next. So, it's early, so the Chapter 70 numbers that I just showed you are based on the estimates from the governor's budget. So, this still needs to go to the House and the Senate. At the local level, we still have those contracts to settle. That will change our budget for sure. The long term, we need to look at the Student Opportunity Act positions and other operating positions being charged to the ESER grant, so that we don't experience a funding cliff. So, ESER expires in FY '25, so we will have a couple of years before that's out of the picture. And that's it. I don't know, Tim has any other comments or questions or?
Just on the ESER.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the ESER, just so people at home, just a reminder, this is the operating budget that we're dealing with today. We're keeping an eye, we had approximately 47 hires last year. And you've probably heard about this financial cliff that everybody's worried about as well as we are. So, we will continue to monitor that and keep an eye on, but it won't be, it won't impact for this year.
With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come up and comment, just walk to the microphone, state your name and address, then you'll have three minutes. Not all at once.
I'll go first. My name is Justin Latham. I live at 75 Harwich Road. I have three children, Alexander in grade six at the mill school, Elliot in grade four at Tatum, and Emily in grade two at Tatum. So, first, thank you to Kim Hunter for answering my detailed questions, so I don't have to bore you with any of that. It was a big help making sure that I understood the details, what I was looking at. I know you all know me, and you know I'm an advocate for the schools. What I will say is that, you know, budgeting is about allocating funds to execute on a strategy. And accordingly, the key task that we should be asking ourselves is whether districts' mission, vision, and strategic goals are being brought to fruition via the budget that's in front of us. We should be highlighting with every budget cycle, not only how we compare to the prior year, but whether that mission's being achieved and showing where we've made it better or where we might have slipped. I'm just going to repeat part of one sentence from the district's mission statement. "To provide all students with the best possible education, to enable them to experience the joy of reaching their full potential." That one fragment of a sentence really carries a lot. Does this budget provide students of all levels of achievement with the best possible education? Does this budget strive to make our schools a place where our children can experience the joy? I can't answer that from just looking at numbers, but I have faith in you to take this mission and take this budget and make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Linda?
Linda Perrin, 11 Belmont Avenue. Unfortunately, I'm not as eloquent as the previous speaker, but I do have a couple of questions, and I know I won't get answers tonight, but I'm surprised at the Medicaid insurance decrease, if we're talking about behavioral problems in children. All health insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurance carries the behavioral health component. We should be going after those dollars. Those are reimbursable to us, and we used to get them years ago. I don't know why we're decreasing that. I'm surprised at that. The other question I have is, and I've asked this before, and maybe it's on one of the slides, for classroom instruction, I always like to know how many are actual classroom teachers? How many PARAs and how much support staff is in there? And my other question, which I think I already got answered, was really on the safety increase. Seemed awfully, 400% seemed awfully high, I guess it's on radios. And then, I would hope, we made a mistake at the high school not putting solar panels on. I hope we don't make the same mistake again with the middle school. Thank you.
You mean Coburn?
Coburn, yes, sorry.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this won't be your last chance. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Ms. Ware?
Motion to continue the public hearing to April 5th, 2020.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, may I show my hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, without objection, we are adjourned. We'll start again at four minutes at 6:00. All right, we'll call the regular school committee meeting to order at six o'clock. We all stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Farrell, if you'd like, roll.
Kira Thompson?
Here.
Colleen Marcus?
Here.
Nancy Farrell?
Here.
Cathy Levers?
Here.
Diana Coyne?
Here.
Bill Garvey?
Here.
Mayor Raichel?
Here. Student representatives report. Right on time.
Alrighty, so some exciting news. Boys Hockey has made it to the Sweet Sixteen playoffs. They're playing Wednesday night at eight-twenty in Melboro. There's a student bus, a student fan bus to the game. Key Club is currently raising money for the Ronald McDonald House at lunch this week. This past week, NHS hosted a food drive, which donated to the Springfield Rescue Mission. It was its annual service project. The Class of 2025 hosted a fundraiser at Nutrition First in Agua this past Sunday. Along with the Class of 2023, they're currently hosting a dine-in fundraiser at Classic Burger tonight, and ten percent of the sales are donated to the Class of 2023. Prom is set for May twenty-seventh at six p.m. at the Log Cabin, and graduation is at the Coliseum this year for Sunday, June fifth. And then seniors excitedly placed their orders for caps and gowns this past week.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, move on to subcommittee reports. Ms. Farrell?
The Budget Subcommittee continues to meet on a regular basis. On our agenda, the FY twenty-three budget, and as eloquently as Mr. Latham said, I hope that our budget does meet the mission of the school and all of the needs of our students and staff. Other items discussed and approved are on our agenda for approval by the full school committee, including but not limited to high school band uniforms, power school position, and student activity accounts. And I know that this has been a difficult couple of years due to the pandemic, and many of our school activities have been canceled, and as school committee members, we haven't gotten to go to as many activities as we had in the past. But I did get invited to the John Ashley Olympics, and I can't tell you how wonderful it was to see all of the students from John Ashley School parade out of the building. They all represented a different country, so they had little caps on their head with the name of the country. Mr. Heath had the music playing, they saluted the flag, they sang a song, and then they went back into the school and they did activities. Mr. Heath had six, I think it was six different activities that all of the students rotated through. I'm getting like emotional thinking about it. It was like, it was like so, so great to see the kids. They had one thing in the gym, and they had these little scooters, and he had a number line out, and I'm a math person, one to twenty, and they scooted up, took the number one, went back and put it on the number line. There was four or five kids in each group, put it on the number line, then they'd be cheering for the next one. Come on, go, go, get two, get two! They'd be telling them, they'd come back, put it on the number line, and then he had dice activities where they wrote number sentences. Like, I think there was a snowball activity where they threw a cotton snowball into a bucket and pulled out a word and read it. And I mean, it was just like so exciting to see the excitement of the students and the teachers that day. And he had two students come out of Ashley School at the end, after all of the other classes had come out, and they were carrying a torch made out of paper. But they were, the whole, like, all of the other kids were just quiet and in awe as they're carrying out this torch, and it was like, oh, like, I just, I, it was like such a great day to see, you know, a sense of normalcy back in our schools. So just to mention that, and, you know, thank you to Mr. Heath and the staff of John Ashley School for making a wonderful day for the students at John Ashley.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Garvey?
Thank you. Facilities met a couple of weeks ago for kind of like an organizational meeting. Moving forward, I believe we're going to be trying to meet prior to our first school committee meeting of the month, every, every month, to have a standing meeting at that time, and hopefully do it at schools and start to visit some schools and get out there a little more. We also, Ben Barquette, the new director of central maintenance, joined us. Dr. Perone joined us, so it was nice to kind of meet him and kind of, like I say, set some things. There's a lot of things coming up. This afternoon, we were able to, all of us, it wasn't a facilities meeting, but we were all able to tour Coburn School, which was very, very exciting, to just see what's taking shape over there so quickly. It's amazing, it's very, again, talk about excitement to see things happening, that's very, very nice to see.
Did you guys see me wandering around outside, not able to get in? Just a few minutes late, yeah. Thanks, Tim, for yowling down to me.
Mayor, I did see you outside. I'm going to jump on the sword right now.
Plywood doors are lying, huh? Five minutes late, I guess I'm out. It looks nice, though, from the outside.
Very nice on the inside as well. We also, not that, again, not that it was a facilities meeting, but thank you to the mayor for, there was some concern about the progress of the playground at Tatum, so thank you for putting that meeting together. We met with some parents this week to kind of...
Tatum PTO put that together, but it was a good meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, again, that, there's progress happening there, so we'll keep...
And Tim has met with them since, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
And I've allocated fifty grand, it'll be in the capital budget to kind of do something in the short term.
Yeah, and one of the vendors is coming out tomorrow at ten to walk the property with us.
Anyone else? Seeing none, move on to approval of open session minutes. I'll entertain a motion for February eighth, 2022.
Motion to approve open session minutes from February eighth, 2022.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Entertained a motion for February fourteenth, 2022.
Motion to approve open session minutes from February fourteenth, 2022.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Presentation, Superintendent Connor, start with the Grin Spoon Awards recognition. Oh, okay, we're going to do the band first, actually.
Okay, well, I'll start that.
They brought props.
Yeah, come on up. Mr. H. So our band uniforms were twenty-three years old, and I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight not only, obviously, our students, our sample student, and, but with, with Mr. H. and the work, and the work that he has done. When we, when he first got here, one of the conversations we had was, you know, really expanding the marching band. We have to have, a school our size, high school our size, needs to have a robust marching band, and that was kind of the edict that, no pressure, but to expand. And I think he, he has taken, and correct me if I'm wrong, but somewhere from, I think we started around twenty-nine or thirty, and next year we're projected at ninety. And so that's all because of the work that all of the music teachers have done, K through twelve. But the program is classy, and what we're asking for is only going to make that even better. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. I want to thank Pat Danby, I want to thank Dr. Perone, who was actually there when we started dreaming about the uniforms, and Superintendent Connor, thank you for your support, school committee, for listening to our presentation earlier this month, or last, end of last month. And I also want to thank the music parents, because this has been in collaboration with the, the music parents who, every month, dedicate their, their, their time to support the band program and do fundraising and help us in any way we can. And so we've had a subcommittee for the past three years working on this, and of course, the pandemic slowed us down, and here we are with a wonderful design from the Stanbeer Uniform Company in Philadelphia. This is the design that we've pretty much agreed upon, and we're super excited. Emily Gruppi is a junior trombone player, and she's gonna, she's modeling the uniform for us. And, you know, it just, it just represents our school colors really, really well, a lot of West Side Blue in there. And so next year, yes, we will have a marching band of around ninety members. So for our field show and our parades in the fall, we're going to proudly wear this new uniform. So again, for everybody who helped make it possible, thank you very much.
Any questions? Ms. Coyne and then Mr. Garvey.
Just a comment, this former marching terrier and flag corps member salutes you. This looks great. I'm super excited, just like everybody else, and I hope they're warmer than the old, old ones back in the day.
Mr. Garvey?
I wanted to comment on the emblem. I love, I love the, the WS looks great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Was that your, was that your choice, Mr. R?
Yes, it was. It was Shelby Ryder helped design that and was very much in the beginning process of the designs, and she's, leads our color guard. And so she came up with some original ideas, including the emblem.
Ms. Marcus?
I just want to thank you and reiterate what Mr. Connor had to say. The excitement of, of the band and the, the increase in numbers is really a testament to your enthusiasm, and the uniform is beautiful. And I think it's probably warmer than yours, but it's going to be much cooler than the ones they currently have, so...
That was our hope, yeah. That was actually wanting to cool it down a little bit. And just a little plug, we'll be marching at the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Hoyoke on March twentieth, and leading the West Springfield contingent there that day, so. But these won't be, we won't have these yet. These will be hopefully for the fall season.
Anyone else?
Motion to approve the use of school choice funds for up to fifty-seven thousand dollars to replace current West Springfield High School band uniforms.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Ms. Farrell?
The Budget Subcommittee was enthusiastically in favor of this. I guess when I think about when we first approved school choice, this is one of the things that I envisioned using school choice funds for, things that are not in the budget and not a recurring expense, but one time every twenty-five years. And we are all just thrilled to be able to do this, and I guess, you know, as a longtime school committee member, to, you know, having, wanting to get the band to such a better place and have our students look wonderful, it's just so exciting.
Anyone else? Before I take a vote, I will just add on that, you've done an awesome job. The bands, and just in my six years, has grown significantly from when I started to what it is now, so, great job. Well deserved. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Onto the Grin Spoon Awards recognition, Superintendent Connor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for our student sample back there. Very excited for those. We are, we're excited to announce our Grin Spoon winners for 2022. The nice part is the dinner will be live this year, which was remote last year, so we're excited for that as well. The Grin Spoon Award is the Teacher of Excellence Award, and it's handed out to four veteran teachers and one new teacher each year. And it's celebrated in the beginning of May with a really wonderful banquet at the Log Cabin, where we celebrate the hard work of our, our, our teachers who have, who have reached this level. And so, without further ado, what I like to do is call each of the teachers up, and then just have you just sit in the front row for just a minute, so we can take a group picture, okay? So, leading us off, we have Philip Hazelhansberry, who is at the West Springfield High School. Philip is a longtime math teacher, phenomenal teacher, loved by the kids, loved by the staff. I can't believe that, that you haven't received it before, so this is, congratulations. The next teacher that we have is Mary Petruski. Mary Petruski's a longtime West Side resident. Comes from a great family, and also, you know, Mary teaches math at the middle school, very similar to Philip, just a leader in the building, but also very much loved by her, her students, and Mary is, certainly gets the results for, for us in the math area in middle school. Congratulations, Mary. The next teacher is Erin Colley from Coburn School. Come on up, Erin. When you talk about excellent teachers, you talk about rock stars, and Erin is certainly one of those. If you ever get a chance, school committee to, we take a tour, any one of these classrooms would be a lot of fun to go spend some time and watch the magic that they, that they conduct each and every day. And Erin goes about her business, and again, just absolutely loved by her students, and when you walk into her classroom, you can just, you can just tell. So Erin, congratulations.
Thanks.
The fourth veteran teacher is Lindsay Canuel, and she is from the Cowing Attornet of School. She is not able to join us today, but she certainly will be there for the banquet. In our first year, New Teacher Award recipient is Shannon Danault from Tatum Elementary. Shannon obviously joined us this year and is obviously heading towards that Rock Star designation as well, and we're very fortunate to have her join us here in West Springfield, and certainly I know the, the kids are benefiting very well at Tatum, having, having her join the team there. So, Mayor, I'm not sure you want to comment or maybe take pictures? All right, come on down. Come on up. Come on up.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that it's wonderful to give these out because I don't think I've received one as an educator. So it's nice to be in the presence of them.
They don't have that for Jim? Okay. Coburn School academic progress. I gotta say, the presentation we had the last meeting was awesome to show the work that the funded positions have specifically shown that there's been increases. Some of the stuff's harder for me to follow than the math. Well, the math actually was very easy to see the increases and everything. So last time was Fozzy, my alma mater. This time we'll have Coburn, their academic progress.
So Principal Gina Martin Ryan and Vice Principal Mike Atkins will be doing the presentation. And before they launch this, a big congratulations and thank you for hanging in there, both of you. Not only are they running a school, but they're also building one in their backyard. And so a lot of decisions, a lot of hard work. So taking a quick look at the data, the results that you guys are getting is remarkable, so thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having us. It's quite an exciting opportunity to share with you. We have a lot of great things happening in our school. And I'm glad it was this year, not this year, that we were invited to speak. The vibe is 100% different from where we were. So I want to take you back to last summer, which is where the work for this year began. And it started with the Department of Education sharing with all schools across the Commonwealth an accelerated roadmap. And the first reaction was a lot of panic. And, oh my God, how are we going to do this? And we quickly assembled a committee of teachers dedicated to wanting to make progress from where we left off. And our anxiety level came down as we began to unpack the work that they had laid before us and really helped us understand that we have this. We know what to do. Their three focal points for us were the things that we're really good at doing. We just needed to have the kids in the building with us. And so that began with creating, going back to, it's really going back to the basics, creating an environment where the students feel like they belong, monitoring our progress, and putting good, strong instructional practices into place. And that's where we began. So I feel like it was a little bit of a roller coaster ride because we'd say, oh, no! And then we'd dive in and be like, okay, we're okay. And that's where we'll start with our presentation. And it's kind of like the picture is like, oh, it's time to move on, but then we have something beautiful to look forward to. So back to our basics. While we don't dress up in costumes every day, every morning when our students come into the building, they're greeted by several teachers. Whether they're students arriving on a bus or they're students being dropped off, they are greeted by several staff members, and it's a great checkpoint for us. We started off with a lot of crying students, and I'm happy to say we don't have the tears coming into the building like we did on the first couple of weeks. It did not take long for them to re-acclimate and really be happy to be coming to school. And this is where it starts, right at the front door. So this is part of the roller coaster ride that we were on. We started the year looking at our data. And I'm sure across the country, we knew that it was going to be difficult work and we would have learning loss and significant gaps. So we started here. This is from our English Language Arts, and it's iReady data that showed us that about 80% of our students were below grade level, which was even, I think when you see it like this, it was even more shocking than what we were anticipating. The good news is, and it's really cause for us to celebrate because everybody's been working hard, teachers and students. In this slide, what you can see is the progress that we've made, and we're only at the midpoint for our measures. So overall, what we're looking at in ELA is that we're decreasing significantly the students who are multiple grades below grade level, those who are just below grade level, and increasing those students who are back on grade level. So while we're seeing that yellow, which is a grade below, growing, that's because we're moving students out of the red. And we're increasing those that are where they're supposed to be. So in a school where we have a lot of challenges, we're extremely proud of the work that we've done in ELA. And what you're comparing is, if you're looking at both bars, you're looking below what our beginning of year was to where we are now. So and we're excited and looking forward to what we're going to see at the end of the year.
So our math results were a little bit more daunting than our ELA, both in performance and in the concern that math builds on itself. So if you have somebody that is two or three grade levels behind in math, it's very difficult, or there's a lot of work to be done in order to build that foundation. So when we started, we had 94% of students below grade level. So we had our work cut out for us. When we met in the summer with the roadmap, we quickly renamed it to Roadmap of Opportunity because it was a little bit easier for us. And we knew that the state had said that this would be a multi-year process, that this is not something that is going to get turned completely around in one year. What we are excited about is that in a half year, we have taken this and the students, we have students that have made, many students that have made like 74 points growth on iReady. And what this shows us is that not only are students making significant progress, but they're closing the gap. We have students that have already achieved their end-of-the-year typical growth. We have students that have surpassed their stretch growth that would be for the end of the year. They are making more than a year's growth in less than, or in a half year. So it's very, very exciting for us, the students and teachers. Testament to them of how hard they're working, and it's paying off. So here's what we're doing in order to try and close those gaps, implementing the assessments. iReady is one of them, and we're using that consistently with ELA and math. We've also included DIBELS in ELA for K to 2. We have the Tell test for ESL students. So we have multiple ways of gauging this. And we recently have a new program that we'll talk about in a few minutes. So we have many, many different data points that we're able to get. And with that, it's helping us to get interventions and implement things, change our groupings to best effectively meet the needs of the students, which we're seeing those successes. The introducing of new techniques, like the really drilling down, we have teachers that are in fifth grade that were receiving students that didn't know letters and letter sounds, not something that they're typically used to teaching. But we've been able to introduce new practices, like six-syllable types, and bring in other programs to help close those gaps up and support the teachers and the students.
One of the things that we've done this year is started looking at multiple data points because what we found, like what Mr. Atkins was talking about, was that the data wasn't necessarily telling us everything that we needed to know. And we needed to drill down even further to understand what the skill deficits were. So this particular slide, what we're showing here is one of the data tools that we use to be able to triangulate all this information that we're getting and make informed decisions that will best support what those needs are. So this is used in a couple of ways, but we used this for the first time this past fall. And it ends up, what we ended up with is sorting students according to these data points that we had. And across all grades in nearly all classes, Mr. Atkins and I remember looking at, looking over teacher's shoulders as they were doing this work and seeing nearly all of our students in the lower-left quadrant of this data sort, which would be at the lowest level. And when you're trying to make reading groups out of this, the panic came in again about how are we going to do this? They're all in this lower-left quadrant. And so then we had to subdivide that quadrant and think about, we have a lot of work to do. The great thing is, just a few weeks ago, we did our mid-year on this and looking again at the same thing and raising the bar. Even with raising the bar and at a midpoint, it was fantastic to see that we have students in all of the quadrants. We don't have that massive number in that lower-left, and students are moving in the right direction. And what this helps us understand is for each quadrant, what are the skills that we're working on that we need in order to move students up to the next level and constantly raising the bar?
One of the programs, thanks to Dr. Guile and Laura Garadisher, that we've been able to bring in is Reflex Math. And I don't know if you've heard about it or not, but you're going to hear more and more about it, I have a feeling. We've only had it for a very short period of time so far. And the growth that we're seeing from this, it's giving the students coaching, it's giving them work and incentives as they work. It tailors to them, but it also gives the teachers a lot of information. This is just one snapshot to show you the sort of growth. We didn't believe it at first, and we had to look over and over and over at different students to see it. But you'll see that in just 10 days, that this student gained 155 math facts, and you can see the growth. I talked to a third grader and I asked, what do you think about Reflex Math? He said, out of 10, I would give it a 15. Asking him about why. And it was that he was motivated by the incentives. But he also said, at first, I couldn't do much on it, but now I can do so much, and I know how much growth I'm making. This is a third grader. I talked to a fifth grader about it, and she said, well, I was already pretty good at my math facts. She said, but now it's automatic. I've become much faster. So we're seeing those gains from students that maybe were struggling with their math facts. And we know math facts is one of the biggest indicators of mass success to even students that were already proficient that are seeing the gains in this program. So we're very thankful for it, and we're hopeful that we can keep this program in years to come.
So at the beginning, we talked about those three focal points for our work this year. And we know that there needs to be a reason for students to come to school. Since I've been in West Springfield, we've been doing Student of the Month. And it's connected with our PBIS work. We have what's called the Coburn Way at our school, and it's very simple for students. They know that they need to be demonstrating kindness, responsibility, and safety. And each month, teachers select somebody from their classroom who will be honored for demonstrating and being a model of demonstrating the Coburn Way. So it's something that we did during remote. It's much more meaningful now that we're back in person, bringing the students together once a month. They look forward to the celebration. It's a secret until then, so they know that day when the announcement's being made for students to come down to the cafeteria. And it's something for them to not only look forward to, but something to work on, and it gives them pride. Part of our PBIS is creating school-wide events that, again, add to that feeling of wanting to be at school because we have things that are fun to do and things to look forward to. Classrooms had the opportunity to earn this reward. And it's something that dates back to pre-COVID, where we had surveys done for our students, and they got to vote on what our school mascot would be. So three years ago, they voted on a Coburn Cub. And finally, we were able to reveal our mascot to them. Many of them thought that it was going to be a flying squirrel. There was a lot of campaigning around that, but that's not what was voted on. But it was a fun-filled day. This happened, this particular event was the day before February break. And there was just such a positive vibe in the building, and the students excited to have been a part in naming our school mascot.
So Read Across America last week made me think a lot about what was talked about with John Ashley in the Olympics. I would say last week felt the most normal at school and had the best vibe in the school in the last two years. It was just different. The only other feeling was when the students first came back, that I felt this sort of presence and just the levity in the building, but also just the compassion that everybody had and the enjoyment that the kids looked forward to it. We had days in December and January with over 100 students absent. Last week, we had days of 14 absent, 16 absent. Our school was filled. We had visitors back in the building for the first time. Many of you came to read to the students. And a simple reading stories to the kids, it was worth more than anything that you could have given them. The time and with them spending with adults was just very, very special. The engagement was there, the kids loved it, the adults loved it. It was just a really great, great week. One of the activities that we had was Dress Like a Favorite Book Character Day. And this is just an example. We had over 60, 70 kids that we pulled together to get a quick photo of them, staff, same thing, participating in this. We have, we're looking forward to more themed spirit days, Field Day, Grade Five Step Up. We're anxious to get family events back up and running when those are able to with the guidance. And so we're heading towards the good times, and we appreciate it.
And this includes with things starting to happen after school as well. So our 21st Century After School Program got rolling again this year. They're doing fantastic things, not only offering enrichment, but also supporting the hard work that we're doing during the school day. So supporting the homework and the skills that we're teaching. In addition, we have art servatory back in person rather than being done remotely, which can be challenging remotely. And more recently, we started a yearbook club. So we're going to have a yearbook, which will be my first experience at Coburn School, having one done. So we have a president of our PTO working with our art teacher. And they have 13, I think it's 13, fifth-grade students who are participating and doing that work. How are we making it happen? I think that was it.
So we, as we've talked about a bunch tonight, we have inspired students, we have inspired teachers, we have student engagement, we are seeing the gap reduction, we're seeing the growth of our students. One example of some authentic learning experiences was a fifth-grade teacher that held, the students did a, basically, like a March Madness bracket, but with historical fiction books. And they got down to the last two. And in order to decide which one was the best, we got summoned, along with other adults in the building, to go to a jury, or as the jury to the court. And we listened to them debate. And they had to be prepared and have their voice. And then we had to decide which one, which made some happy and some not so much. But it was just a culminating activity of reading, writing, listening, speaking. It just brought everything together. Just one example that is showing how we're making these gains.
And just to add on to that, the hard work of our teachers is, it moves the heart. They persevere and continue to. And we still have some challenges that we're working through. If you walk through Coburn, it's quite obvious. We have instructional spaces in places that we never would have imagined that we had to have them. But our teachers continue to persevere. The, the, our, our staff is not shy about going above and beyond to make things happen for us. And for me, the indicator of that are that we have committees that continue to grow and we add on new committees. So over on the right-hand side of this slide, our PBIS has extremely strong membership with new teachers and veteran teachers. We actually have an executive board to our PTO and that's new this year. And there, we're moving that along, which is fantastic. We have a school council with teacher and parent representation. We have a school climate committee. That's not only our current Coburn, but we've, we've partnered with the other schools who will be joining Coburn next year. We have new this year, an instructional leadership team that's looking at supporting those academic initiatives and supporting where we have need to get those things moving. And we have that yearbook and it couldn't be done without our teachers wanting to do the work outside of the classroom too. So as much as they're doing within, they're doing it on that side too. We work well as a team and they're willing to take risks, which is so important when we're, we're faced with some of the challenges that we have. We have to be willing to try something new to move the, the needle and we're doing it. So, and then the final thing is this, our reason why. So it makes it easy to do every day that we come to work. And Mike and I say it at every turn, at every interview, that it is the best place to work. It sounds so cliche and I remember teachers telling me that at my day one at Coburn. You have to live it to know it, but boy, is it true. It just fills your heart right up and that's it right there. So that's it.
Here, if I could just jump in. So just, so folks understand the magnitude of the jumps in, in scores. So at Coburn School, first language not English, 62.6% of the population. Low income, 83.4. Students with disabilities, 10.6. In high needs, which is a combination of many of those things, 90.5. So the, the work that the administration and the teachers, it's a vocation there. And as, as you said, when you walk in, it feels like one large family. And again, you're making, making miracles and magic for these kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Ms. Farrell and Ms. Marcus?
Thank you. I'm probably the one here that loves the data. And I could think up probably 100 different questions to ask. I'll try to limit what I'm asking. I was just wondering on the data, like you're giving the whole school and you're having all of the students. If you looked at it from, by grade level, is there any grade level that like stood out that at the beginning of the year was sort of not in this difficult a place or in a better place? Or were there any particular grade levels that had significantly more growth than others? So like, you know, you're, you're showing us all the students in your school and I'm sure your data teams do a data dive and dive down into it. But, and then on the math piece, I'm getting a little particular, but I, like Fozzy School had, that geometry was like really a problem. And there's like, when they looked at it, it seemed like the geometry strand was like lower than some of the other ones. So those kind of type of things, did you?
And measurement.
Uh huh.
We're seeing similar things. And I'd say that our, our data across one, two, one through four, pretty similar in the growth that we've seen. Grade five, not as much, which is understanding when we think about where we, when we were in school last and where the, over the time that they were without. And what kind of skills are being taught from third grade up until fifth grade, it's significant. So you would not have seen as much of that growth across those grades. ELA and math, while there is a disparity, like what Mike was pointing out with, there was even more learning loss. The growth that we're seeing is still like, you can look at particular students and they, 70-point jumps and we're only at the mid-year. So we have a lot of hope of being really close to on grade level with what we're doing right now.
We did meet as, as grade levels for data, to look at the data for both ELA and math, to break it down by grade and by class and, and look at particular students as well. It would be a very long presentation to show all of you, but we have been, have been doing that.
And then when you, if you take, say, your whole fifth grade class and each of your teachers, do you break them into groups so that they're not always like with their own classroom teacher, but sort of like you were talking about based on needs?
Yeah.
Say like you have, I don't know, 100 students in fifth grade and four or five teachers. And when you break them down into groups according to their needs, do they move to other teachers? So like, okay, Colleen and I have, have the same need, but we don't have the same classroom teacher. But we're put into a group that is going to service that learning that we need to, for us to move forward. Does that happen with the students?
That's a, a great question. We decided to try that with our fourth grade team. And they are, they are, they are divided that way. That is the one grade that's doing it this year. We wanted to see how that would go. And there's a lot of logistics with the, the physical plant of the building because of how we move the students, because they're not all within a pod, within proximity of each other. So it took a lot of planning to make it happen. But it, it's actually potentially a model of what we want to do going forward because they're having great success. I, what I'm interested in seeing is the, the comparative. We need to triangulate the data and look to see if, having done that, if we're seeing different results there.
Just one more thing, I'm wondering on the, on the math. You talked about the Reflex teaching, the fact fluency type of thing. So when you think about iReady, are some of the students not at grade level because of language? Like when they're taking the assessment? They, they would know the mathematics of it, but they can't, they don't have the language skills to be able to interpret the problem. Is, is that also happened?
That can be for some of the students, for sure. And that's one of the things that we need to, to scaffold for. So in our, in our instruction, it's making sure that we're pre-teaching vocabulary. And actually, I was just looking at something that our math interventionists were doing for grade two with the ESL team, which is the explicit instruction of the vocabulary that they're going to need to access that learning.
Just one more question. So this data does not include kindergarten, this is one through five?
Beginning of the year did not include kindergarten, the mid-year does include kindergarten.
Okay, thank you. I could go on, but.
Ms. Marcus?
So I'm not going to ask any difficult questions. I'm just, it's, first of all, I just, when we, I was on the interviewing team when Gina was hired. And one of the things that team collectively shared with Gina is it is a special place that when you, I could cry. When you go there, you will never want to leave. And to Nancy's point, although Tim mentioned the, the population of students whose first language is not, not English, there is a large percentage of that 60-something percent who are still English language learners. They are receiving explicit instruction to learn English. So when you look at the results overall in both in ELA and math, but particularly in ELA, if those students were reading on grade level, they wouldn't be English learners. And that is very pressing data for any school, but knowing the population. It's awesome. Thank you.
That's 61%, 45% are English language learners.
Ms. Quin?
Thank you. It's amazing. I, being a non-educator, just really enjoy seeing and hearing all the creative aspects, the resilience, the flexibility. It's, it's, and you're seeing the results from it. One of the questions I had, and maybe this is a collective with Tim as well, but with kind of some of the, I don't know if the Reflex tool is across all the schools or not. I know iReady is, but some of the results you're seeing or different things that you're trying are, are the best practices that you're finding able to be shared with the other schools in the district? Just to try and find those best ways to address all of this?
There are, there, there are committees that do meet and get to share these things out. So the math committee met on this and they were talking about this. And when you see data like that slide that Mike talked about, within 10 days to have that kind of growth, you want to replicate that in many places. The piece that takes us time is understanding what kind of data tool, what kind of measure we need to use in order to get the actual information we needed. Like didn't know that we're going to need DIBELS to drill down even further with reading skills, but that told us a lot of information. And now, okay, so what are we going to do about that so that we're not just talking about data? We need to be as rich with our action as our data. But now it's finding the resources that are going to meet that need. So this one for math, amazing. With the reading, we're, we're doing the same thing, so there's conversation about it. I feel very lucky that we're working with a group this year called Momenta, who is introducing us to things that if you didn't teach it in fourth grade before, how would you know when you have learners that normally would have that, that readiness, that skill? And pointing us in a direction so we can attend to this and keep moving. So there is conversation. The, the reading team also meets to share out what's happening. So I don't know if it ends up being the same need in the other schools because we have a unique population. So not all of them will have necessarily that level of need that we have.
I think Phil Coburn is looking down and smiling. He would be so proud of everything that you guys just showed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great tie to Mike. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go quick through this. Some of it's already been covered. As, as mentioned, graduation this year will be at the Big E. So we're returning back to the Big E and that was decided with the, the voices of parents and students and the graduation committee. So we're, we're happy to return to the Big E this year. We have kindergarten kickoff and what that is, is this is a new program that we're trying to enroll our next year kindergartners sooner than the summer. There's a lot of issues that go around budget, around class sizes and all, all kinds of enrollment things. And so Rebecca Burgos and Aaron Rogers and a whole host of people are working on this. And it's going to be a great event. I hope, I hope the committee's able to attend. It's April 14th, 13th, April 13th. She corrected me before the meeting on that and I still got it wrong. April 13th, 5:30 to 7:30. So we're going to be plastering the town with invitations to this. There's going to be not just enrollment, but there's also a lot of different types of stations that we'll have for parents to, to learn about West Springfield way of education and get support ahead of time. So you'll see things coming out to be in the record. If you know anybody who has a kindergartner, make sure they enroll. It's hard to find them, right? We don't have that, we don't have a database on K yet. So any way we can get the message out to get them there on April 13th would be, would be great. The elementary reading program is, is making its way. It'll be being piloted, I believe, in the next couple of weeks. Dr. Guile has done a wonderful job ushering this process. I think there's 22 or so teachers that are on this. I know Ms. Marcus is on this from the school committee. And so it's been a great process and it's been a vetted process, meaning that we are taking our time. We're making sure that it's the right program for West Springfield. It sounds like we're getting pretty close to a program that is really going to work well for the entire population, not, not just some. So we're, we're really looking forward to that coming the end of the spring and then hopefully launching in the, in the fall. The return to school from vacation has been wonderful. As, as Mr. Atkins has mentioned, we, 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 we took the masks off for some and optional. And we've had, we're hovering around 50%, between 30 and 50% of the, when we first got back, of students who are, and, and teachers who are continuing to wear the mask and that's great, that's fine. And it, you know, so it's, it is working out. Our numbers are continually dropping. Hopefully, we can keep it there and, and, and continue that trend. So beyond that, everything else looks good.
Questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, move on to the business manager's report. We took one item off and one item's done, so just fiscal year 2022 student activities.
So the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Audit and Compliance Office advises the school committee to review and approve the student activities annually. And enclosed in your packets or left on your desks were copies of the two reports that were shared at the budget subcommittee for your review.
Have a motion. Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve student activities as listed in attached documents. FY22 High School Balance Sheet and Source and Use Report dated December 31st, 2021. FY22 Middle School SAF Balance Sheet and Source and Use Report dated January 21st, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second. How the subcommittee vote? Any discussion? Seeing none by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? New business, 2022, 2023 School Calendar.
So in front of you, you should have, or in your packet, you should have the calendar for next school year. You'll notice it's fairly similar to years past in terms of professional development days and where they fall. Three on the first three days and one in November and one in March. We did add two half-days for elementary. And so reason for that is this reading program that we are hoping to adopt does require quite a bit of training. And we want to make sure that we're getting every, every ounce of, of understanding of how that program runs. So we are asking to include for next year, two half-days at the elementary level only.
With that, do I have a motion? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the 2022, 2023 School Calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? See, oh, Ms. Farrell?
So the half-days are, the professional half-days are only for K through five?
Correct.
Okay. I don't quite think it says it on there, so I think we need to add that. Okay.
Any further discussion? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Old business, face coverings update. Ms. Farrell, motion?
I didn't know if Mrs. Oliver's wanted to take this to the policy subcommittee.
So, yeah, let me, if that's all right.
Go to the policy.
I'll take it, yep. So this, this is a vote regarding the mask-wearing on buses. The CDC has dropped that requirement. The CDC has dropped that requirement, the federal requirement on buses, and so the, the motion would be to align our in-building mask policy with our bus policy, which means kids would, it would be optional for kids on buses.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve the face covering policy filed EBCFA.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Public comment?
Can I just, can I make a public comment?
See, like, subcommittee reports, that's where you could have made a public comment, but, go ahead.
You know what, I just want to give a shout-out to Moussa Tomaradz, who, he was a Coburn student, and his, his brothers were big-time wrestlers, and Moussa not only won the state championship, but he also won New England championships. Hopefully, we will be able to have Moussa here and recognize him, but I think, I don't know if you go anywhere past New England's, but I, I remember Moussa when he was like this big and a feisty little thing when he was.
Yeah, I don't want to meet, I don't want to meet him in a, in a dark alley, for sure, but he, he did, he will move on to the Nationals at Virginia Beach, I believe it's March 25th to the 27th. So, yeah, and he, my understanding is he's our, our first national candidate for wrestling, so.
And his brothers were both extremely talented wrestlers, considerably older than.
I think they were both New England finalists, too.
Yeah, but this one.
Yeah.
And so congratulations to Moussa and his entire family, it's a wonderful family, so congratulations.
And we have two relay, track relay, indoor relay teams that are going to Nationals this weekend, and cheerleading is going to States this weekend. We do so good, it's hard to keep track of all our teams in the offseason, yeah. Any other public comments? Anything from the school committee, since we opened the door? Seeing none, by, our next meeting is March 22nd. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a second?
Second.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Good night, Westside, and go to class of burger.